I guess we can find it to order then. And I don't know that. Recording, they could let it, let it be known. What do we got here?
You didn't think you was gonna have a day like this today, huh?
Welcome, Mike Baptiste.
Hey, good morning.
Good to see you, Michael.
Good to see you.
The only thing I see in preliminary business is an A and R, is that correct, Ken?
That's correct.
Approval not required plan for map 27 lots two and three, three and four, Shelburne Way, John Reedy.
Okay.
Are you able to put that up for us, Ken?
Can I have another copy? I left the other one in my truck. Come on, Mike.
How are you, buddy?
Hey, hanging in there.
Good. Stay tough.
You want, you want to show the lot, lot map?
Yeah, I thought Ken was working on that.
Want me to do it, Ken?
I think I've got it up now. Nothing yet.
Are you sharing it, Ken?
Yeah, oh, there we go.
There we go, here we go. Uh, what are we doing here, Ken? Just moving a lot line?
Just moving a lot line.
Thomas Hardman from Site Design Engineering, could I come in and present?
Oh, sure, Tom.
So this is a subdivision that goes way back, actually goes way back to Mr. Baptiste's days. Uh, good to see you, Mr. Baptiste, haven't seen you in some time. These two lots were created, we're basically moving the center property line over about 15 feet uh, to accommodate a few um, site features that Mr. Reedy has put in. Uh, Lot Way is, is under agreement and will likely be sold.
I'm sorry, what kind of, what, what kind of features?
And I believe they applied both.
Ken, it broke up. What kind of features were there?
I see these, I believe one is a compressor, um, or condenser, I'm sorry, for the, uh, for the house. He put it a little too close to the property line, he wants to give himself a little bit more room.
Okay, does he own both lots?
He does, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Oh, I see. So the, the other lot that's getting a little smaller, there's no, um, it still meets all standards?
Yes. Both lots about three and a half acres.
Any questions from the board? No, I'm pretty familiar with the property. I drive, my wife and I drive our bikes down there all the time. It's a pretty remote area.
I have a question. Existing drainage, does it have to be adjusted across the property?
No, the drainage easement uh, goes around existing Flared Inn section and drains the catch basins out on Shelburne Way.
So that all remains intact, it just moves on to the other, well, it stays with the initial house?
Yes.
I have no questions, George, this is Richard.
Yeah, I, I don't either.
One kid to make a motion.
Motion to approve the A and R as presented.
Mike, I want you to second, buddy.
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike Baptiste, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, have yourselves a pleasant evening.
You do the same. Uh, next up is a public hearing for Master Millwork. I don't have all the particulars on that uh, in front of me, Ken, as far as map and lot number and all that. But do you have the uh, green cards in your possession, they've been checked?
I do not have green cards in the file.
Someone needs to tell me what a green card is.
It's a. So you know you got notification.
So we have the uh, mail receipts, don't have the green cards.
Bill, is that something you could shed some light on? I see you, is this not your project?
You talking to me, George?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the planning board, I believe is responsible for mailing out the notices, we're not responsible in this particular instance, so I can't add anything to it. If Ken has the whites, I thought that it was just a uh, a situation where we were, well, you're required to notify the butters. I think the whites indicate that notification has been made.
Correct, but uh.
That's correct, a notification has been made.
Have they been checked against your butters? Everybody got one, Ken?
Yeah, everyone got the, got the notice. It was on the butters list at the assessor's office, put together.
You're kind of breaking up there, I don't know if it's one my end or yours.
Apparently it's my end. Uh, everybody who is on the list provided by the assessor's office got notified.
Okay, then we'll move forward then. Suppose I should ask for a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion was made by Richard, seconded by Mike King, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, uh, all right, is this your project, Bill?
Yes. Yep.
I'll give you the floor then.
Well, let me ask a question, what do we have for um, for requirement requirements and in voting membership uh, for the, for this proceeding?
We have four members present at this time, and this is a site plan review, so you would, you would be looking for four out of five.
And then what do we do with the fifth member? I mean, we can, you're still operating under the Mullen's Rule, is that correct? Where the um, a member who's not present can review the record and commit vote on the project?
Yes.
And do we have five members?
We have an associate member that can act on a special permit.
So based on, I guess based on that, I could, I could move forward for this, for this one hearing. We, we, do we believe that the associate member would be available for subsequent meetings?
Uh, as far as I know.
Okay. Well, um, yeah, I know that Master Millworks is a part of our community now, and they'd be interested in advancing the project as quickly as reasonably possible. So we'll go, we'll go forward um, with, with our first, first hearing, our first presentation. But um, this, this project is um, in addition to the Master Millwork site on Charlotte, Charlotte Furnace Road. You might recall that it was approved, I think, back in 2016, when uh, they put forth a site plan and site plan review for the original 20,000 square foot building that was constructed on the site. So, business has been good, they're doing a good job advancing the, their, their product. So they've, they've opted to add in addition to the building in the order magnitude of 43,000 square feet, almost two times, a little better than two times the size of the building that currently exists um, on Charlotte Furnace Road. So um, we think that, we think that it's a good site, good addition to the, to the project. And uh, you know, we're kind of maximizing out the lot with respect to lot coverage, things of that nature. We're right at the, at the maximums, but in any event, what they'd like to do is add 43,400 square feet of additional assembly in manufacturing area in a sub, in a building that would be attached by a 15 by 30 foot link to the existing building. So um, on the uh, I guess it would be the east side of the site is where the building would be. The plan that Ken was showing you previously was the um, was the existing condition site plan, the way things existed on, exist on the site for, for the most part today. So um, you can see there's a 27 stall parking lot in the front, there's some stormwater management, the 20,000 square foot building that has a, a manufacturing and a distribution portion associated with it. Truly a little bit of a unique, a unique site here in that, you know, it's a multi-use type building where we have both administrative and professional offices in addition to the, in addition to the manufacturing and the assembly components. So, the first one-third front of that building is the administrative offices. So we have really a portion of the site that's, uh, the front portion of the building and the parking lot. That's where most of the administrative staff operates in parks. And then there's some parking in the uh, in the, I can't point to this very well, other than on my picture on my desk, but um, you know, some of the employees park in the area to the, to the, I guess we call that the, what, south of the building. Um, so in any event, we're modifying the site to better facilitate the movement of materials in this, in the property, in the project and out of the project, as well as to better accommodate the employees. Um, if you want, do you want to go to that next plan, Ken? What we, what we would like to do here is really separate out the administrative and the office portion of the building from the manufacturing and distribution portion. So we um, let's see, I have a letter here someplace, don't know what you did with it. So what we've, what we've done is we've show a service row, a service driveway on the south side of the property. It's to the remote southerly portion of the site, it butts up against the um, the easement or the power lines that run down, that run down from, I guess that would be east to west. Um, we thought that that was an appropriate place to, to provide our service entrance where all of our trucking could enter and all of our shipping could leave from, and just retain that front entrance and driveway in the parking lot for administrative purposes. So we thought that we'd have a good opportunity to take our, our, our assembly and manufacturing, shipping and receiving and divorce it from the office portion. It's, it's better, I think, in a lot of respects for the staffing of the place. We can, they can mobilize their manufacturing help and, and shipping help with that portion of the site and kind of leave the, the front portion for administrative purposes, visitors, salesmen, things of that nature that come in. So we proposed about a 500 foot driveway that's on the southerly side of the project. It's 30 feet wide, it accommodates all the truck traffic that would be necessary. We have like a 19 stall um, parking area for, for the shop, let's call it the shop side of things. And then there's a reasonably good sized turning area that's just to the, um, to the east of that. So we're able to pull all of our tractor trailers in and back into the loading bays that are right on that southwestern corner of the building. There's two large, um, not large, but two loading bays there. And then there's an over 12 foot overhead garage door adjacent to that that would allow like a box truck to enter into the, to load right up to the building if they had smaller products that needed to be taken out. Um, further along that main entrance road, there's another 10 stall parking area for employees. And then there's the fire access that wraps around the uh, about three sides of the building. It's a 20 foot wide um, fire, fire department access road. We've been working with uh, the fire department and trying to get that uh, squared away with them. A portion of it is going to be paved, uh, about a third of the way up is paved. The remainder of it would be recycled asphalt product. That was a, that was a suggestion by Charlie, we, with Charles Rowley, he did the review on it. Um, you know, we had originally showed it as crushed stone, but it's been changed to uh, to recycled asphalt product. Charlie did do a review letter, we provided responses late this afternoon to Ken. Um, so that information, it seems to be at least submitted for review. Along the side of this driveway, we're also going to upgrade fire protection services. There's going to be an eight inch fire main that's going to come up that, the north side of that driveway. And we're going to enter right into the corner of the building, that's, I guess that's going to be the southeast, southwest corner of the building. So we show a fire protection service coming in there, we also show water ser, domestic water service um, coming in, into the building at that location. So we've, we've separated out our office use from our, from our, let's call it our, our assembly, manufacturing uh, and fabrication use. So that's what's really going on there, there's a good sized circular, there's 83 parking spaces um, total on the site, proposing to probably add up close to 50 additional employees um, to the, to the, to the site when it uh, when it gets fully developed. Um, and uh, and go from there. We've modified the stormwater management system, the existing one that, that existed on the site. The next plan, I think, shows um, the drainage configurations, the grading and the drainage basins. So you can see that we have um, a drainage basin on the east side of the property that's going to take all of our roof runoff and a good portion of our driveway runoff and direct it into that basin. You might see at the south end, there's a couple of drainage structures down in there, an infiltration trench. We've tried to put it all into uh, into that back basin. There's a small area of um, infiltration underneath the, the tower of the loading dock. You know, we have to have a small catch basin down in the base of that loading dock, it slopes down. It's a depressed dock, about 42 inches, 40 inches lower than the, the floor slab of the building. And so we're able to have a, just a separate infiltration uh, unit for um, for that garage, garage, I'm sorry, the loading ramp drainage. The employee parking lot, that's a little further, um, let's see, I guess I'm getting my directions confused. A little further west, there's a double catch basin in the center of that parking lot. All this other drainage from the site is really going to sheet flow into that area. And we're going to pick up as much of it as we can um, at that location. The driveway coming in, it's 30 feet wide, that'll accommodate whatever trucking that's necessary to come in there. There's a couple of catch basins um, located along that, along that driveway. We've um, we've put in water quality control structures, we meet our stormwater management standards. We have our TSS removal where it needs to be before we discharge into our infiltration basin. So um, that all seems to work out fairly well. There's another portion of drainage trench along the backside of the building. Um, that's going to accommodate some of the roof, roof runoff and infiltrate that directly into the ground. So stormwater management wise, we're retaining all of the increase in runoff onto, on the, on the property itself. So, that's uh, that's the long and short of that. We show a new septic system, there'll be uh, facilities for the employees in there. So we indicate a septic tank and some galleys um, in front of the um, in front of the new addition. There's a small sidewalk, and I think there's nine parking spaces with wheel stops that are located along that area as well. Um, just to the south of that, you'll see that there's a tight tank shown, since there's a floor drain and since we have a 12 foot wide overhead garage door that a vehicle could drive into, the plumbing code requires us to put a floor drain in that, in that area. So seeing as we have no municipal sewer down there, we're required to pipe that um, floor drain piping to a tight tank. It's an industrial, similar to an industrial wastewater holding tank. There'll be um, there'll be alarms set on the tank at three fifths capacity so that when that um, unit does become three fifths full, an alarm will go to a man station inside the building and they'll know that it requires to be serviced and, and pumped out. So that's what, that's what is all going on on that side of the building. The uh, as we move to, toward the existing building, there's a lot of recycled asphalt um, vehicle circulation over there. We're looking to um, to remove most of that, and we're going to have to reshape it because we're paving that area as well. We're, we're calling for five inches of bituminous concrete on, on that site, since it's a little bit of a heavier load, a little bit of a heavier loading to it. So we feel that it's appropriate to put at least five inches of mix down there. Our roadway cross-section um, indicates 12 inches of gravel, four inches of dense graded crushed stone, and five inches of uh, bituminous concrete in a three inch binder layer and a two inch top layer. Um, I know that uh, during Charlie's review, he's had a little bit of comment about the four inch uh, layer of dense graded. I'm not going to budge on that, I'll be honest with you, that is a, I learned the hard way on that one. That's the best surface to put down prior to paving. Um, you know, the mass state gravel that we, that's called for to put underneath the parking lot, it's a two inch minus uh, material. Two inch minus material isn't the easiest material in the world to grade, but if you rough grade it, you can get a two inch stone to be reasonably close.
So Bill, if we. Bill, what does two inch minus mean?
Two inch minus means the largest stone size in the, in the gravel is two inch. So it's well graded from two inch down to, I don't know, quarter, number four, number 10, number 200. It's a well graded material.
Thank you.
We top that, when we top that with a three quarter inch dense graded stone, it's easier to grade, it's easier to compact, and you have a superior surface on which to pave. And uh, you know, that's, you know, I've done a lot of roads that way. Um, and you know, we think it's the best, the, the best way to go. Client understands the need for that, you know, it's a heavily used area, will be heavily used. We want longevity out of the system, and we feel that this cross-section provides that level of longevity. So that's pretty much what we have um, in that area. You might look in the lower right-hand corner of that, of that um, drawing shows the catch basin that's at the bottom of the, the loading dock with the three compartment tank, it's an oil water separator, and then that'll be discharging into uh, some underground infiltration units. So it'll meet all the stormwater management requirements for that. So, that's pretty much um, the long and the short of the site development scheme. There's the landscaping plan that Ed Fuller has done for us. So we're trying to screen the um, with a lot of vegetation that both sides of our access drive, the employee parking lot. Right now, um, just to the north of our new parking lot is where the existing parking lot is. It's going to be repaved, restripped, but there's a wooden fence that, that goes from the corner of the existing building down to the, to the side of that driveway. So that screening will effectively screen all this circulation area and delivery area from the public way on, from Charlotte Furnace Road. So we think that, you know, the screening that's internal is um, is sufficient, meets the landscaping standards. And we think that it'll um, provide um, a nice feature to the site. Then when we look at our driveway coming out, most of the truck, traffic coming in is a right-hand turn coming out, left-hand turn, I'm leaving the site. You know, when that vehicle lines up, you'll see that there, his line of sight and his headlights should not affect that house across the street. We think it's a little better arrangement than what was uh, what was originally installed. And we, you know, we had one of the guys in the office that was part of the public hearing process um, with Bayside Agriculture, and he listened to a lot of the commentary that was presented at the original meetings for Master Millwork, and we tried to rely on that a little bit in designing our, designing our site. So, that's really the, the uh, the, the long and the short of the, of the project. And I guess I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Bill, this is Richard, I have a couple. Um, I've read comments regarding uh, fire access to the rear of the building and that there had been a potential solution worked out, and I'm wondering if that solution is represented on these drawings?
That solution is represented on these plans, these are the, um, I don't know, Ken, did, are these the revisions we sent over today? They look like they are.
These are the ones you just sent over, yes.
Yeah, they're dated August 10th. So the, the plans dated August 10th are the ones that reflect all the changes that were brought up in the review letter and comments raised by the fire department, waiting for their final review of these drawings.
Okay, Ken, would you mind just sharing with us um, what you, what you did to address um, their initial concerns?
Up to the north, we've made a little bit of a hammerhead turnaround so that you could drive completely around the backside of the building and then bear to the left, and then you could do like a five-point turn to come out and turn around up there. So that's what that was.
I see.
Originally, they were planning on backing out, and we had a turnout down at the um, southeast corner of the building where that, where the drainage is now coming into the basin. They were going to back into that and come out, but um, there was a, they pointed out a regulatory element to us and we made the modifications to the plan.
Okay. Um, second question is, the existing driveway that's coming into the lot now is quite wide. Um, and from the street, you get a pretty good look into the uh, work area. Um, I'm assuming that um, the business operation vehicles, the trucks and the deliveries and, and uh, whatnot are going to be coming in the new driveway. Uh, the only thing that would be using the existing driveway are people coming into the front parking lot or the employee parking lot. Is that a fair assessment?
That's, that's a fair assessment, yes.
Um, the reason I bring it up, I'm just going to make a comment. I took a ride up there, and that lot, or that parking area in there right now is very, very busy. There's lots of storage, there's lots of um, I'm, I don't know if it's waste, but a lot of empty pallet storage because it's, it's very obvious the place is bursting at the seams, if you will. And they've had to use a lot of their outdoor space to hold stuff that they could, that they could put out and take the weather. Um, and again, and Bill, to be frank, it got, it was a little messy. And I'm wondering if, if that existing driveway could be narrowed down and, and less of a view into that work area from Charlotte Furnace Road, given that all the big traffic's going in your new driveway?
Well, with the, with the landscaping that's proposed, there's really only a 24 foot width that'll be remaining once the new work is completed. And that, you know, there's a fence from this, from the southwest corner of the building right down across the face of those parking spaces. So the only view lines of sight will be, will be 24 feet at that point when we do, when we finish this project. So that'll be, all that work area will be screened from, better screened than what it is now.
How about the, the existing building, Bill, has that landscaping been executed from the, from the first plan?
I, you know, I know that it is landscaped to some degree, but I did not review it for compliance with um, the original plan, the original plan. So I can't offer you um, a comment on that, George.
Bill, doesn't it look like there's going to be too many trees left in that site? What are they going to do for buffing on to the uh, the north side? Because there's a subdivision going in there, the other side by the power lines. You're going, didn't it, there's not going to be any trees left there when they get done. Is there any buffing post?
Well, we're, we're showing um, for the first 300 feet in, it's going to be fairly well landscaped. Um, then there's a, in addition to the remaining tree line, which you're right, it is, it is rather narrow in that area, but that's uh, Then there's a, in addition to the remaining tree line, which you're right, it is, it is rather narrow in that area, but that's, you know, we, that's what we proposed at the, at the present time. We've kind of screened against the building and screened the parking lot a little bit, looking at it from the south. So you're, you're right, but I think that we've implemented a lot of landscaping to try to improve the, the site visit. I mean, you can, you know, that, that power line going through there isn't, you know, isn't the most attractive thing in the world either. And I, I think that what we are gonna be building there is an enhancement as opposed to that clear-cut power line.
No, down, down the corner where your sediment point is behind the new building, you're gonna wipe everything out back there. That's the way it looks from, the way I look at this print here right now.
Right. There's a small 10-foot band that's between the property, thereabouts 10 feet, that'll be between the property line and the edge of the limit of clearing. But there's a solar, there's a solar project just adjacent to that. So that land has all been cleared i- in and of itself. So, you know, really, I think the best solution might be to, to, to cut it all out.
Well, what's gonna happen is them trees aren't gonna stay there anyway. You know, once you open up their canopy, they're gonna be toppling over every windstorm.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, they, they're not used to seeing a lot of weather put to them. So you're, you're right. I mean, it might be better to, to cut it into grasses and to have a turf finished there.
Can we plant some bushes back there, something that's gonna grow to size in the future? Because like, like Richard was saying, you know, for a small, small company, there's an awful lot of cars parked in the front. And the yard is a total ramble. I mean, they get stuff everywhere. You know, it's great to see they're building, you know, they're expanding, but.
Well, if you flip, if you flip to the cover sheet, you can get a good view of what's really going on there when you look at the power easement and the solar site behind it. You know, there's, on the, on the east side and on the south side, you know, it's, it's virtually clear-cut. It's clear-cut on Charlotte Furnace roadside. The only real wooded area is to the, is to the north. So, I mean, our existing land, current land use around this site has already devoided it of, of all, for all practical purposes, all the vegetation.
That first home lot on that new subdivision is gonna be a tough sell with that building in place.
Well, then, you know, it is the business development overlay district. Granted, it is an overlay district, but these uses are allowed within there. And, you know, the choice of the developer of that prop, the property to the north, I mean, you know, I don't know what it's gonna be. I, I understand it, it may be housing, but I don't, I don't know that firsthand.
Yeah, that's what's going in. That's what we approved. Just that, that very first house lot is basically gonna have a broadside view of the side of this building.
Well, we don't know that because we haven't seen the, the development plans. And if they're looking to really make a marketable house in that area, I think that they'll try to retain as much vegetation as they can cite their house in the best possible position. That will minimize, will minimize that. I can't speak for it, but I think that that's what they would do from a marketing perspective. At least that's what I would do.
So is it fair to say, Bill, though, that with this additions going in that, I'm looking at an overhead now and I see that, I see the cut line for the existing building, that, that we're not gonna cut any deeper than what the existing building's done, except for maybe a little bit on that hammerhead, right?
I think that you can't use that image. I think you gotta look at the sheet three or, that, that shows the limit of the clearing.
You know, let's do, do that for me here. So I, I wanna make sure I understand the map, so.
All right, well, if you look, if you look toward the existing building on the north side of the existing building, we're not cutting any of that vegetation that we show on, that is indicated on this plan.
Right.
Our limit, and we've, our limit of clearing is gonna probably be about 20 feet from the property line up to the end of the fire department turnaround road.
All right, and keep in mind, fellow members, that the subdivision going in, in there, the back half is all the open space. So I think that the lots that they're doing the building on there, the back of that lot wouldn't even reach the back of the, of the existing building. Does that look about right to you guys?
I think there is also a 10-foot easement on that line to get to the back of the property. There is.
Say that again?
I think there's a 10-foot, I won't call it a buffer, but I think there's access to the open space down that property line. It's not cleared at this time, but.
Oh, 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 that we, that we, that we agreed to on the outside of, on the north and the south, right?
Correct.
Right, right. So I think some of our fears are being taken care of here.
Bill, do you have any elevations on what this building's gonna be looking like?
Yes, they should be, they should be with the plans that, they should have been submitted with the plans that, yeah, they did, they did have elevations. This should be in addition to our, our drawings. I think we had, I think we had 10 in our set and I wanna say there were two or three architectural elevations for the building.
While, while we have a quick break here, my name's Jonathan Rogers. I own 49 Charlotte Furnace Road to the south on the other side of the power line. With the new proposed driveway and site and everything, what is the increase in noise that's gonna be the house that I'm gonna be building on that property in the next year or so?
Where are you in relation to?
I'm just on the, just on the other side of the power line to the south, both, both 47 and 49.
Same side of the road?
Same side of the road, yes.
But before you get to the power lines, correct?
Correct. Because I know, like we were saying earlier, I think it was Mike was saying that all that vegetation on that tree line is gonna be gone. And with the added traffic coming in there with the, you know, the tractor trailers. So I just didn't know if there was gonna be any sound buffering or anything like that.
What the plan shows is some, some new landscaping along that property line back about 300 feet from Charlotte Furnace. Is that accurate, Bill?
Yes.
Excuse me, what is this time? What is the depth of that lot, Bill?
This lot right there, 630, 630 feet thereabouts.
And, and I know my property line at 49 goes back 520 roughly.
Yeah, I know that it's, I looked at her, 623 feet. 623.70 it's shown on sheet number three of 10.
So the, the question is, is how much wooded buffer is there gonna be between the driveway and the power line clearing?
Correct. And any kind of noise buffering to my property in the south? If there is any.
Well, your property is, is like 300 feet down the road, isn't it?
Uh, no, it's just on the other side of the property of the.
Well, it's on the other side of the power easement, so.
Yeah, I mean, but in regards, I mean, a tractor trailer is in quiet. So if they're in and out of there all day, it's still gonna create noise on my, on that want line.
Well, they're gonna create noise, they're gonna create noise on the roadway. And I think that, you know, that, that planted buffer strip, you wanna know how wide that is? Is that the idea?
Yes. It's about, it range, it's about 30 feet at its widest. And where the radius is at the corner, it, it trips down to 25. So it's 30 feet at its widest going back, I don't know, 100 and some odd feet. Yeah, that buffer goes back, that buffer goes back 240 feet in length and it's 30 feet in width about.
Did I answer your question?
That, that, that's the tree, the tree buffer?
No, that's the, that's the tree buffer and the landscape buffer.
Okay. I mean, I guess that my property goes back 500 feet, so I'll still have it on the backside with that landscaping thing, so, okay.
Bill, a quick question. I'm sorry to step in in here. What are they gonna do about lighting on the new building?
There'll be wall packs on the new building and I think we show a couple of light posts. There's a photo metrics plan that was included with the, with the plan set that was done by Rab Lighting. That's a lighting company that we're looking to purchase all their products. If you look on that sheet, it gives us the, it gives us a picture of what the light image, what the light would look like on the site.
Because as it, as it, as it at site is now, when it's lit up at night, I tell you, it definitely bleeds a lot of light.
Well, this design, I mean, this plan that I'm looking at right now, it's included with the plan set that was submitted to you guys. I think it shows quite a bit of buffer of, of that lighting and, and, and shows how it's contained pretty much to the, to the, to the work area in the central portion of the site.
Was there conditioning in the original site plan about hours of lighting, hours of operation or?
I think there was something on hours of operation. I don't recall on, I don't recall anything other than that. I don't recall any of the details. I really didn't look at it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think that was one of the complaints that we received in the past is, is the lighting situation. Ken could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that was one of the issues. Wall packs can be particularly troublesome.
Yeah, they can be if, if, if they're not the proper ones, you know. And I think that the lighting plan that we submitted gives us the foot candle, lighting intensity on the ground on that entire site. So, you know, those are the fixtures that are intended to be used there. I mean, a wall pack is likely to be installed over each one of the man doors or the pass doors is on the rear of the property and on the south side of the buil, rear of the building and the sides of the building. You know, and that central portion, the, I think, just from what I, what I've, how I've read the plan, I thought that the lighting company did a good job in minimizing spillage of light off the site.
All right, I will, I'll have to look that over. So may I ask a question? This is Richard. I recently, in talking about zoning changes in other parts of town, learned about dark sky certified lighting. Is that something that we could consider here? Now, I realize, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, this, this area is in the business overlay district, but we are mixing in with residential folk. Would it be worthwhile to, to take advantage of that technology and keep the lighting to a minimum?
We, I don't think there's any, any issue with that. I mean, I think that cutoffs should be placed on any, cutoff shields should be placed on any of our pole lighting that we have. And whatever's necessary to focus the lighting right on the site. I mean, those foot candles, those are a half a foot candle, a tenth of a foot candle. I mean, those are, those are minimal amount of light, is a minimal amount of light intensity around the site. So that's what we're, that's what we're looking at for lighting right there now. But the short answer is, Richard, yeah, there's no, no problem with that. We understand that. And I think that we've already selected the fixtures that kind of minimize that. You know, and, and create the maximum amount of dark sky on the site.
What I learned was, Bill, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm, I'm, I'm picking this up as I go, is that they actually have fixtures that have been certified as dark sky compliant. Have you heard of that?
I have not personally, but I wouldn't be surprised if that were the case. It makes, makes perfect sense.
I'm just throwing it out there, because I think, I think it, we, we, we are, you know, mixing business and residential. And I think that the lighting is a, is a key factor. We need to take all consideration there.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at that lighting intensity plan, it's from this site at Charlotte Furnace Road, it's zero foot candles. Those are all double zeros right up there. So as you start to move right up to that drainage basin, there, there's, there's like a tenth of a foot candle of light that's within 100 feet thereabouts of the, of Charlotte Furnace Road. So we've, we've taken care of that. You know, I have, I have a real conflict in a, in a meeting schedule right now. Can I, can I reconvene later with you folks tonight or?
I don't have many more questions at this time. I'm anxious to hear Charlie's reaction to the letter that GAF sent today and go through that. I think that's our next logical step, Bill.
Yes. Can we, can we continue at this point? So give us a chance to look at the full plan set a little better and review the correspondence you've had with Charlie? Would that be?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, yes.
And the next meeting is the, I don't know, 27th, is that right?
24th.
24th. Oh, I'm going by memory here. Let me get my calendar out.
We actually have a special meeting next week, but the, the normal meeting is the 24th, if I'm not mistaken.
Does that work for you, Bill?
Yes.
All right, I would look for a motion to.
Can I, can I, can I ask one quick question there, Mr. Chairman? This is Jim in East Cranberry Highway.
Yep.
Can you, can you give us calculation on how much fill you're gonna be removing from that property and, and for earth removal? As you move forward, please?
Yes.
It's quite a, quite a good hill there, so that would be pretty good. And we have earth removal bylaws, so maybe Mr. Buckland could move those, get those to you so we could kind of move and, and step here. Thank you.
Also, if there's any other public input that anybody would like to chime in, please let me know right now. What's that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on here. I got the video screen. Am I hearing you correctly that you're continuing the hearing for two weeks?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, hearing no other requests for public comment, I'd look for a motion to continue.
So moved?
I think 24th at 6 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks a lot for your consideration. I'm sorry they had to cut things short, but much appreciated.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, guys. Look forward to the next meeting.
Very good. Next item of business is a continued public hearing for Antonellus, map 14, lot B, Old Onset Road. This was definitive subdivision plan that we reviewed, we opened last meeting. definitive subdivision plan that we reviewed, we opened last meeting. The, um, I'm not seeing the cross streets, um, on Old Onset Road located, so I'm a little, uh, I think I might have been looking at the wrong property. Is this the, uh, the site that had an old temporary electric service located on, uh, Old Onset Road, or is this further toward Aunt Hannah's Lane?
Still bog down the end. It came before us, before George. Access is a tough situation down there. And, uh, I mean, as I said, you gotta take consideration. There's a wetting bog in the back.
This looks like, uh, it looks like it's next to the bog and goes behind the bog. Do you have a copy of the plan, Mike?
Nope, I'm waiting for it to come up on the screen.
Okay.
I'll tell you one thing, I hate these meetings. Okay, Old Onset Road. Okay, now, if I'm not mistaken, there's some easements coming off of Ant, Antonelli Way that goes back to the bog. They have to maintain that some way so they don't put that guy out of business. I mean, you got big equipment going in and out of there. Now it's gonna go across his driveway.
At this particular time, he doesn't use that access, but they are, they're going to preserve his right to use part of that driveway to get to it should he need it. Uh, he spoke at the last meeting. I don't know if he's here tonight, but he, they use Aunt Hannah's Lane for most of their access, but he's seeking to preserve an access point here, which I think they've come to an agreement with the property owner.
And Michael, what we learned last week was that if you look on the, on the map there, I, I believe the easement goes from the, uh, the bottom right corner of the Antonelli's Way there, diagonally up to the left, and they're gonna move that easement down so it's, it comes up to Antonelli's Way and goes straight across.
Okay, now, they're gonna, they're gonna make that driveway adequate to get tractor trailer in there?
Yeah, we talked about that, but the interesting part is, is that that easement right now is unpassable based on what we heard last meeting. I mean, it's not even cleared to the point where a cart can go down there right now.
It, it's understanding that they will, they will leave an easement equivalent to what's there, but they have, they're not going to construct it. That's up to the abbot to, to construct should he need it.
And we did have a letter from the abotters saying that the terms that they had worked out with the Antonellis were acceptable to him. Isn't that true?
I, that was the discussion. I don't know if it's in print.
There is a letter. It's part of the package.
Yeah, I just don't recall it. We're also looking for a list of waivers, uh, Ken, did do we have those items somewhere?
You do. Let me try to pull it up.
There's a bunch of them. It's, that letter is actually part of the letter that's dated second division. I mean, it's called second division subdivision, second definitive subdivision filing six seventeen twenty underscore two underscore zero. Um, it starts out with a, uh, introduction letter to the members of the planning board, where if you scroll down, you'll find all the waiver requests.
Uh, Mike, to answer your question on the, on the Woods Road, there's a notation on the plan, approximately ninety feet of existing wood road from Old Onset Road is to be relocated to Antonelli's Way uh, as shown. Individuals, if any, with rights to pass or repass on the Woods Road are hereby transferred to the twenty-foot right-of-way shown on the east of the side of Antonelli's Way. So there'll be a twenty-foot right-of-way down that property line for anyone that has rights to that Woods Road.
So, so in other words, for them to go in there, they're gonna be driving on Antonelli's driveway, basically?
I think the right-of-way is between the driveway and the property line.
That's correct.
I will, uh, look a little closer, see if it's identified. Yes. It's between the property line and Antonelli's Way is the, uh, is the relocated easement.
Was there a specific reason, George, that we continued the public hearing? Was there something that we, we were waiting for?
Uh, I don't know.
Yes, it was to get this information on the access for the building easement. And we have a letter from August, August sixth from GAF that, that spells it out in diagrams.
Now, I guess we need to, uh, review these waivers requested. Uh, first one is a, you moved them on again. Lack of profiles being provided. Uh, Charlie, are you with us? I didn't, uh, I thought I heard you before.
Yep, yeah, I'm here.
Uh, is there anything in this list of profiles that, I mean, there's, uh, waivers that jumps out at you?
I'm trying to find it because, um, it did not come to me today. So hang on just for a minute. Um, on the plan, they put it on the second sheet. And that was there the first time. So that's, that's not an issue. Some of the conditions on the profile concern me, and I brought that up. It's a part of my report.
Okay, they're looking for a waiver of providing a road profile.
They shouldn't ask for that waiver. It's there.
Yep. Estimate for both rate and volume of runoff?
Yeah, they didn't provide any drainage calculations because they thought the, the roadway was so short it didn't need it. When you look at that profile, though, and you look at the plan view, there is a portion of Onset Road which appears to flow in the direction of the driveway. And if you look at the profile, there is no raised berm or anything that would prevent that runoff from entering the driveway. So there's no way to tell how much runoff actually would get to the end of that driveway which pitches downward at roughly a three percent slope. And then at the end of the road, it's uh, with no potential there at the end of the paving, other than, uh, a hay bale line beyond that, which is the boundary for the wetlands at that. So my comment initially, uh, which is part of their report, was that they need to provide some protection at the end of that road.
Well, uh, Charlie, guys, this is Brian in GAF. Um, yeah, we're, we're kind of just viewing this as not too dissimilar from just a single-family residential uh, development. Um, for all intents and purposes, if you were to view this property after it's built out, um, it's gonna have a single-family home and a driveway. So we haven't really provided any drainage for it. Uh, you'll see that uh, at the end of the roadway, you do get into a, a vegetated buffer, this, which is approximately a hundred twenty feet to the wetlands of a wooded buffer. So that's very pervious. Uh, topsoil, forest soil, organic layer, and the runoff will just infiltrate into that naturally. Uh, Charlie's point about a berm at the driveway, uh, is a good point, easily addressed. We could add that to any revised plans uh, to make sure no runoff from Old Onset Road, uh, comes onto Antonelli Way and contributes to that.
Just a comment about that. Um, obviously, if it was a Form A situation or place where there was a subdivision or any plan involved, you could maybe just go to the building inspector, get a building permit, and deal with the right-of-way issue by itself and be done with it. But unfortunately, that's not the case. It's been filed as a subdivision. So the planning board has to look at it as a subdivision. But I don't disregard what you say about, uh, the plan itself and the fact that, uh, basically, it's no different than, uh, what I just described, but nevertheless, uh, it is an issue that has to be dealt with some way. If you could put the berms or the road, the, um, roads, uh, or the drainage from moving into that driveway, that's fine. And, and I would like to see that on the plan. But I think that the end of the driveway, uh, and that pavement should have some sense of protection. Now, it could be essentially a, uh, a depth of stone, stone chips or something which would, uh, intercept that water and prevent it from washing off the end of the pavement and uh, making some sort of a gully there which eventually would break the pavement off. Now, there is, with respect to this easement and so forth, if I may, George?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, the details and everything
Break it down to Charlie?
And the Antonelli. Because this is a, it's a private right-of-way that crosses Antonellis Lane. So insofar as that's concerned, I don't see that as an issue that the planning board needs to be involved with. One exception. And that is that, um, and Mike Baptiste alluded to it, that if Mr. Fielding is expecting to use trailer dumps to access this property or his property and use this driveway, the track of the trailer dump will certainly cross the, um, entrance of the Antonellis driveway, which apparently they're aware of. But the thing that concerns me is at the end of the driveway where it has to make a sharp turn to the right, there is no provision for the widening that way, which means that there may be an impact to the people to the right. I think the name is a motto on the plan. Now again, that has nothing to do with the planning board. I think that's a, a private matter between the parties involved. But at the same time, on the plan, there is shown a fourteen-foot wide glass area which is the shoulders for the subdivision pavement. When, uh, Rodney Fielding constructs his road, that glass shoulder will be disrupted. For that reason, I think that there should be some sort of a berm. There should be a berm on the side of the road anyway uh, to protect the shoulders because, uh, in my experience, given a three percent grade with some of the edges of the pavement, it will eventually, and you'll have problems with the pavement edge. That's gonna be even more of a concern as that access easement gets developed and you get trucks running in and out and having to make a turn in both directions. So to that extent, I would like to see, um, Cape Cod berm on both sides of that road and some sort of a test condition that says that it shall be maintained that way. So that if anything happens in the future, at least in terms of the subdivision road, the construction of the road has been protected. And to that extent, I think that's probably all the planning board can do. This is just my own perspective because I think if the right-of-way and what the Antonellis and Rodney Fielding are uh, prepared to agree to is between the two of them.
Yeah, we can add, uh, Cape Cod berms to the plan, Charlie. Uh, the only comment I have is at the end where we have allowed for potential future truck traffic to cross the driveway, um, that section might just be, need to be removed if and when, uh, that access easement becomes developed.
Well, again, that's, that's gonna be a problem for Fielding and Antonellis to, uh, if, if that area you want, uh, because it's for short distance to provide a smooth transition, maybe that's something they'll have to deal with. I think in, in terms of the approval process for what the planning board can do, it would seem to me that they can condition the plan that they wrote to be maintained throughout its effective life. And that is on Antonellis to make sure that his driveway is maintained under the subdivision rules and regulations. What's between, uh, him and the easement owner is, in my view, between them.
Excuse me, I'm, Charlie, I'm a little confused here. I was under the impression that the easement did not go onto the Antonelli's driveway.
It does not. There's no way that, uh, it could not impact them if that driveway is, is not constructed properly. But as I tried to suggest, it's not an issue that the planning board needs to deal with. It's an issue between, uh, Mr. Fielding and Antonellis and the abotting owner.
Yeah, I, I agree.
The total frontage, is it a hundred twenty-nine thirty-five plus the forty or including the forty?
No, the lot as it exists right now has a hundred twenty-nine on Onset Road, which is not the hundred fifty that's required, so that's necessitated us filing this Form C.
So the one twenty-nine includes the forty-foot easement?
Yeah, that's correct. That's the overall distance, um, and includes the forty feet, correct?
All right, back to the Yeah, so Brian, you're gonna take under advisement Charlie's suggestion about the berms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I see the total frontage which includes the forty-foot way is only a hundred twenty-nine feet, right?
That's what was just explained, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I misunderstood it when I looked at the plan.
Yeah, I was, I was in the same boat, yeah. Other waivers?
Which one are you on, Charlie?
Brian, is this, uh, does this line up at all with any of these streets across Old Onset Road, like Midway or Vertino or?
No, there are no streets opposite this property, no.
So is it between them, uh, further down? Excuse me?
Well, if you, if you come onto Old Onset Road on Aunt Hannah's End,
Yeah.
Um, and you went down and then you take that sharp right, Aunt Hannah's would continue straight, take the sharp right around Old Onset, this is maybe three, four hundred feet down on the left.
So it's between the first and second house on the left? Is that accurate?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I got you. I, I thought it was further up toward, uh,
No, I make, I think that, I think it's between the second and the third one.
Correct, it's between the second and the third one. There's a wooded lot there, correct?
Okay.
Talking, here's Old Onset Ave, or Onset Ave, I should say. Here's Old Onset. Here's Aunt Hannah's Lane here. What we're talking about is right here, going back to this property here. And they get their bog access now over, over in this direction, from what I remember from our last meeting. That sound right, Brian?
That's absolutely correct, yep.
That, that, that stub road, or the driveway road, I should say, that connects to the back piece of property, right? Am I right?
No, it ends right there. It's, it goes 120 feet into the, into our lot and it ends.
But that 40-foot lot's a separate lot. It's not connected to the Antonelli property where the house is going to be, right?
Well, Antonelli Way will remain private and won't ever be a public way.
Antonelli Way leads in the back, so probably in the future, they can subdivide all that property in the back.
Well, if, if that were feasible, they would come back to you with a subdivision modification. But I don't believe that's feasible. There's a significant amount of wetlands in the back of that lot, and that would probably preclude that.
Okay, I would like to dispense with the waivers if we could. I know there's quite a few. We could, we could review those and get them squared away. We can move forward. Unless the board finds another problem here, I think that's...
I read, I went through them all, George, and it seemed to me that the waivers were appropriate. And I'm saying that only from the point of view where that, the methodology that these owners have been forced to go through to build a house there, which I'm not opposed to, causes them to have to do this. And it makes sense. It's unfortunate. I was, I had asked before about why a frontage variance hadn't been given, and apparently that was, that was something that wasn't, not able to be achieved. So this is what it resulted with. Perfectly, looks to be a perfectly legal implementation of our, of our laws and zoning laws with a, with a lot of heavyweight stuff that comes along with it, but we don't really need.
Is there anything else that, anything, you have any issue with any of these waiver requests, Charlie?
As long as they can put something at the top of the road, Old Onset Road, that's fine. And if they were to add Cape Cod berm to the sides of the pavement edge, that would be fine. And if they would put a sort of an apron of concrete on at the very end of the driveway, I'm happy with that. And I think that's all we need in this particular case. I think Brian's accurate when he says that it's basically a driveway for the family house.
Yeah, I think it's a typical waiver of subdivision roadway construction, just, you know, and every element, every element connected to that. That particular part of Old Onset Road has some elevation to it. So I think they'll be able to shed the water off from Old Onset Road easier. So I don't know if there's any further discussion. Is there anyone here that wishes to make public comment regarding this proposal?
Hi, George. This is Kate Foster. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good. I just have a question. So Richard just mentioned that he was surprised, and I'm trying to educate myself through this process. I think Richard just mentioned that you were surprised that for this project, that they weren't given a variance for the frontage. Is that, do I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, is it normally in a project like this that you would give a variance if they're looking for, they have like, like what, 129 feet and you need 150, right? Is that, do I have that correct?
What I think, what I learned was is that we haven't done it before.
Well, a variance has, is very specific standards you have to meet. There's hardship, there's terrain, and it's probably an easier way to go to do it this way, I would say. Brian might be able to shed a little light on it, but I think this is, in the past, this has been given pretty reasonably, this way to achieve frontage. And I think the standard for getting a variance is a lot higher.
So are you saying it's easier to go this route, meaning the subdivision route, as opposed to asking for variance on frontage?
I would say it must be, because most, it does, it happens a lot.
It happens a lot. Okay, so variance on, on frontage is denied, so then the choice is to go towards obtaining a subdivision. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, sorry, I can't quote you the specific standards for achieving a variance, but...
Hey, George, I got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
You're bringing that up. Now that the, the, the road is on a 40-foot wide piece of property, and the main lot is 129 feet, why don't they combine the two lots into one and just put a common driveway in there?
No, the 129 includes the 40 feet, Mike.
Pardon?
The 129.35 frontage includes the 40-foot right-of-way. So they only have 129.35.
Now, this is a subdivision, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can, can we condition this, that that road is not to be used for any further subdivision in the back?
Well, it wouldn't be able to without another subdivision plan and another...
Well, can we, can we say that road is to access, well, it doesn't even access, to access that lot to the left of it? Because I see it as a subdivision. We had this for us 10 years ago, and there was a problem with access to get in the back. And all of a sudden, it seems like with this creative thinking, that somebody figured it out.
Well, I think you could condition the, condition the waivers granted based on it servicing one lot.
In perpetuity, sure, okay.
Any further subdivision would require a full-blown subdivision roadway.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think Michael makes a good point.
Mm-hmm.
So...
If laid out, that frontage applies to the entire lot as it exists. So in order to get a second house lot in there, you would have to prepare another line that would divide off the front house lot from the area in the back. In order to do that, you would have to extend the layout of Antonelli's Drive. There's not enough room to get frontage for another lot because of the length of what they put in. So that could require them to come back for...
All right. Do, do we have any more public comments?
Can you hear me? This is Jeff Amato.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, I'm the son of Willameta Amato, who's the property owner. And first thing I wanted to say, my mother really appreciates the work this committee is doing as far as the planning. One thing that you, you said last meeting was the concern about commercial trucks. Is that still being honored with, with the, with the roadway next to her house?
We did have some discussion about the construction of that way as to whether it would support commercial truck traffic. But as of this moment, that access point is not going to change from what it is today. It's, it's, it's still wooded and inaccessible.
Okay.
But should they require access to that, it would basically come along your property line, or your mother's property line.
Okay.
On their side of it.
But it would be the response, it'd be the responsibility of the Fieldings to make that easement usable for whatever they wanted to do.
Okay. And as I understand, I'm sorry, as I understand, Fielding has been in direct contact with my mother. And what I heard from today was that he and her would need to talk about the turn, that sharp right turn, that might be happening if going on that Woods Drive, I believe. Let me throw y'all a curveball. I just want to answer this for my mother. She asks me questions or asks questions about the naming of the drive, Antonelli Drive. I know you need to have that. How do I answer, what is the, is there a condition for naming of the drive? Is it because it's on their private land?
There is a means of naming roadways in town. This is a private way, and the road they, the name they've suggested would have to be approved by the 911 system.
Okay.
And I don't know that they're actually going to name their driveway, but it's basically going to be a driveway when it's completed.
Oh, I see. Mother, mother was thinking about, of all things, that she wanted to think about the naming of Hammond's Way. Hammond's was the previous property owner, I think, years. I know, I think 1954, she had ownership of the farm back there. And she's very passionate about that naming process. So I'll inform her that she will need to talk, I guess, directly to the city of Wareham about her feelings on that.
I think we probably already have a Hammond Street Way or something in town. So the, the 911 system generally wants to eliminate duplicate names, so.
Understood. Okay. Well, listen, again...
Correct. Hammond Street, down the corner of the bend.
Okay. Well, listen, we appreciate the work that you're doing to protect her. And again, I do want to thank you again. That's all I have.
She should shoot for Amato Way.
Yeah. I explained to her, I said, I asked her that, and I said, I don't think I want to hear my name in reference to fires or anything. So, but that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, any further public comment? Hearing none.
It was mentioned in GAF letter, George, that they would not be posting a covenant, provide some other sort of security. So that between now and when you, hearing and the 20 days becomes effective, you, you need to know what that will be before you sign the plan.
Is there a need for a covenant where they're not going to, we've waived road construction? Or is that strictly for security on Old Onset Road?
It's for the security of the road construction. It's nothing to do with the lot.
Sorry, Charlie, you broke up on the...
It's strictly for the construction of Antonelli's Way.
But we've waived that construction. So is there a need for a covenant?
You waived that construction?
Sorry, I'm not hearing you.
I assume that you want the road built to the plan.
I think what he's saying is, is that he assumes that he want, that we want the road, Antonelli's Way, built to the subdivision standards, and therefore a covenant would be in order. But I was under the impression that we all knew it was going to be a driveway.
Yeah, the waivers ask for, you know, basically says it's not going to be built to subdivision.
I, I think that's incorrect. This is a subdivision. You can call it a driveway if you want, and technically that's what it is. But it's still a subdivision, and the only way you get a lot released to get a building permit is either post-security in advance, or you get the covenant release. You can waive construction requirements, but I don't believe you waived all of them.
Yeah, I think the, the easiest thing might be to do is just propose some sort of bond, because the construction costs won't be, you know, it's not a roadway, it's a 1,000-foot roadway. So construction costs could be covered through a bond.
If that's agreeable, that makes it simple.
That sounds smart to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, any other...
Go ahead.
Anything further? I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Mike King. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Action on the definitive plan. Oh, you could take an action on the waivers as a whole or individually.
You can refer to the waivers in the letter of June 17, 2020, the planning board on the definitive, the definitive subdivision. Yeah, if you want to consider them as a whole, maybe just include in the motion as applicable, because some of them have changed and are not applicable. And with the revised plan, we're preparing a few more of them would no longer be applicable.
And you're, you're submitting a revision?
Yeah, Charlie's, what he mentioned was the berms and like a stone apron at the end of the drive and, was that it? Anything else, Charlie? The berm at the, at the beginning of the drive, along the edges of the drive, and then some sort of stone apron along the end.
Okay, I got you.
That's fine with me. If you want to, if you want to save the waivers as included in that letter, with the exception of three, of those three items, that's fine.
So I'd make a motion, George, in, we got a berm on the street, right? We got a berm on the side of the driveway. Am I right there?
Right.
And, and stone at the end, right? Are those the three things that we agreed that we're going to add to the, to the plan tonight?
It sounds like it.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve as applicable, the requested variances in the letter from GAF dated June 17 for the Antonelli project, with the addition of berms being added on, on Old Onset.
So I'd make a motion, George. We got a berm on the street, right? We got a berm on the side of the driveway. Am I right there? And stone at the end, right? Are those the three things that we agreed that we're going to add to the, to the plan tonight?
It sounds like it.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve as applicable the requested variances in the letter from GAF dated June 17th for the Antonelli project with the addition of berms being added on Old Offset Ave, berm on the side of the driveway, and stone fill at the end of the driveway.
Yeah, applicant to submit revised plan indicating the berms and stone as requested by peer review.
That was, that's the motion. We do together, we do good work together, George.
Is there any any further discuss, was there a second, first of all?
No, not yet.
Second.
Seconded by Mike King. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Haven't seen your lips move, Mike. Opposed? Have you got a comment, Mike?
Aye, George, I'm sorry.
Unanimous. And regarding the definitive subdivision? Will we get a motion? Don't all jump at once now.
I'll be happy to, George. I want to get it right. We're going to make a motion to approve the submission for a definitive subdivision as submitted. Is that how we say that?
The plan date I have here is 7/20/20. Is there a revision?
Well, there is a revision of 8/6, but we're going to be revising it again. So I don't have a date for you to refer to, but approve it pending your review engineer's approval with those three additions that were just discussed.
So.
So that the planning board can use that date and just get the revised plan into town's office.
Okay, so use the 8/6 and we'll get you in a subsequent revised plan with those three additions.
So approve the plan revised to 8/6 with a further revision to be submitted indicating the construction details agreed to. We could put that, we can fill in that revision date when it comes in for signing, I would imagine. So we're referencing the right plan.
Do you want me to give it a shot, George?
You're my guest.
All right, and you're just going to, when I stop talking and I leave things out, you just keep going and fill in the blanks, right? So I'm making a motion that we approve the definitive subdivision plan for the Antonellis based on the plan dated August 6th with a revised plan to be provided with the three changes to the driveway regarding two berms and stone. I think that's all I need to say.
I think you did a good job.
Sounds good. Motion was made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That sounds unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Brian.
Good night.
Next on the agenda is the continued public hearing for the Borrego Solar Projects. It's 140, 150 Tahanet Road. I'm just looking quick for the other addresses. There we go.
27 Charge Pond.
27 Charge Pond, correct. Good evening.
Hi.
I did see your your letter of, this is an older one.
August 3rd?
Yeah. You've had a response since then, right? Or am I mistaken?
So we have comments from Mr. Rowley that just predated this letter for 27 Charge. So we still issued this supplemental letter that I'm happy to run through as an overview of where we were at the last meeting and then where we're at tonight, if that's helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'm Stacy Minahan with Beals and Thomas. I'm here tonight with Zach Farkas and Dean Smith from Borrego regarding the three solar projects you just mentioned. At the first hearing on July 13th, we had heard from the planning boards, their feedback, as well as some public feedback regarding, namely, concerns surrounding tree clearing and then potential visual impacts, particularly with regard to the visual impacts concern relating to the Tahanet road sites. And so we had ended the meeting indicating that we take a look back at the designs and submit some additional information that the board had asked for. So the August 3rd package that we sent in summarizes that information. I included three site context maps. So the 27 Charge Pond Road site context map has not changed from what was originally submitted. Chairman Barrett, as you noted, we did receive peer review comments from Mr. Rowley, and we'll be evaluating those moving forward. And then the two site context exhibits for 140 and 150 Tahanet reflect a 150-foot setback from Tahanet Road. If you recall, the original design had the limit of clearing directly adjacent to Tahanet Road. Those changes, in addition to addressing, hopefully, some of the visual concerns, also resulted in a reduction in tree clearing of just under 15 acres across those two sites. So in addition to the design, and we will submit kind of a full revised plan set, but had wanted to make sure we were incorporating peer review comments. And the Conservation Commission just finished its review of the delineation. So what we submitted was the kind of overview site context, so you could see the changes that we're anticipating. And then we will submit the full updated revised plans as well. We also heard the board regarding potential mitigation. And so Borrego did undertake a forestry evaluation of the three sites to estimate the market value of the timber that will be cleared from the sites. In total, that estimated value is just over $80,000. And Borrego is committing to taking no economic benefit from the tree clearing and providing that funding to the town for its preferred mitigation project or projects. Borrego's also been discussing tax agreements with the town that would yield an approximately $14.1 million year project term. And then we also, at the board meeting, it had been asked that we provide some information about greenhouse gas equivalencies. And so we've included a summary of that in the letter and then also the documentation as well. In a nutshell, the three projects will create 69 megawatt hours of renewable energy each year. And that's roughly equivalent to over 10,500 passenger vehicle trips in a year. It would power over nearly 8,270 homes, single-family homes for a year. And it's roughly the equivalent of the carbon that would be sequestered by 63,760 acres of U.S. forest. And I think with that, that's the information that we were, had pulled together for the supplemental packet. I'm happy to talk through anything else or answer questions you might have on that information.
The the revenue to the town, is that the pilot fee?
The $80,000 is the fee, or is the market value of the timber that would be cleared. So it's the value that Borrego would otherwise get from selling the timber.
But you mentioned other income to the town, 14 million?
Yeah, the tax is the, yes, the tax agreement.
Yeah. One thing that I questioned, all these solar projects generally get fenced in. Is there a way where it's all basically one property owner that you could, they wouldn't have to do that, so you wouldn't impede wildlife movement things of that nature?
So I'll ask Borrego to jump in, but my initial answer is, I don't think so. I think it's oftentimes a requirement and sometimes even a financing requirement. Additionally, with the wildlife gap at the bottom, I wouldn't anticipate animal movement to be significantly impeded by the fencing. But Borrego, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Chairman Barrett, the fence is a requirement of National Electric Code, so we would not be able to successfully pull our electric permit without the safety fence around it. But as Stacy said, we're able to put the wildlife gap at the bottom to allow for pretty unfettered access and travel for most mammals and reptiles.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
As long as it's over eight inches tall?
Well, or if you get through that separation, which is many animals in this region, obviously not deer and larger mammals like that, but.
No, I didn't know it was a way we could be a little more innovative, but I get your point.
So Stacy, you mentioned that you reduced the clearing by 15 acres at 140 and 150?
Yes.
And that was along Tahanet Road?
Yes.
Okay, just for the board, I'm going to, I just want to talk to the board and give you my impressions. I did do a pretty thorough drive-by of all the, of all the land in question. I actually went up to Mike's old neighborhood and looked out across to see what was going on, and I understood what the point he was making last time. And regarding the property at 27 Charge Pond, I find, I found it very difficult to find a way where that solar farm would be visible to anybody based on the topic, the topography that I saw anyway, in driving, in driving around it up into the ball fields and up and down Glen Charlie. Regarding 140 and 150, it wasn't quite that clear to me. And it looks like it's going to be quite removed and not that visible. But the question I have is, how do we ensure that even on a private road like Tahanet Road, that the solar farm is not visible in the wintertime when I'm driving through in the heart of summer and the vegetation is as thick as it's going to be? I don't know how I ensure that we're not disrupting the neighborhoods at all without having a look at what it looks like in the middle of February. And Stacy, I'll take, I'll take a comment from anybody on that.
If I just share my screen so that we can look at the updated site context exhibits for 140 and 150, if that's helpful?
That'd be great.
All right, so you should hopefully be seeing 140 Tahanet right now?
That's what it says.
Yep.
Perfect, just to facilitate the discussion. So I guess I'll jump in, but then obviously if there's more discussion to follow. So on 150, there's already a fair with the long Tahanet Pond, and we did obviously understand the concerns from previously. So before, the array was running right along Tahanet Road. There's now an additional 150-foot setback off of that road that's vegetated. So, you know, it's quite distant. And I think I'm going in the right direction. For 150, it's an even wider existing gap to the west of Tahanet plus the 150. So I think the likelihood of visual impacts is very unlikely with the revisions.
So it was 150 feet on the up, on the first one, on 140?
So it's, the site plans previously had the limit of clearing running adjacent to Tahanet Road, so.
Right, right.
Yep, and both of them now have a 150-foot offset from Tahanet. So it's this 150 plus everything that exists here, plus whatever may be on the opposite side of the pond.
Great, thank you very much. I think from my perspective, from a visual impact to any neighborhoods, that this is exactly what you should have done. So you've basically gone from a 50-foot required buffer to a 150, 150-foot buffer. And that doesn't even count the land to the west of Tahanet Road.
One question that I had, this is definitely a big improvement. Thank you. What is the elevation differential between Red Pine Lane and where the array is?
I would need to look at LiDAR topography. I don't know that off the top of my head. I can tell you that in the south for Tahanet, we're cutting the site as we discussed at the last planning board meeting. So this site does kind of slope down from high points.
And what is the high point?
So the existing high point, just get to the correct plan. I know we're cutting, I think, about 30 or so feet.
I would say that's the easterly side of the site is the high point, isn't it?
Yes, I just don't know what the actual elevation is off the top of my head. It looks like it's, you know, I'm seeing 100, it's probably 120 or so, if I'm finding the correct contours. Just searching for, yeah, 105, 110, and it continues up a little bit here. And then slopes kind of in directions.
So it slopes down toward the water?
It slopes down towards the water under existing conditions. It will continue to do that under proposed conditions. And we are also removing material from this site. So it drops from, you know, the high of 110-ish to 80 here, for example, or, you know, 105 to 75. So there's a fairly large change in that elevation, which I think helps the visual aspect as well.
Well, yeah, it's going to help the visual aspect from, if you're sitting on a kayak from the lake. The property owners on the opposite side of the lake, all their homes are up on a hill from lake level. It's a fairly substantial rise from the surface of the water up to where the home is built. So it's almost like having a dinner plate tilted toward those homes. So the extra 150 feet of clearing is all well and good. But I don't believe that it's going to, it's not going to shield those homes from that solar field. Not even by a small morgue. So if I read this right, Tahanet Pond is at 35 feet?
Right, and there might be some datum differences as well from the locus.
Yep. And.
So it's, I mean, it's, and it's very gross numbers, but you're talking 50 here. And this, so this site is higher than across the pond.
Right, and across, well, and across the pond, there's a, I mean, I don't have the elevation charts in front of me, but just from personal experience, there's a solid 25 to 30-foot elevation change from the level of the pond to the yard level, much less where decks and bedrooms and things of that nature.
And I think that's likely, obviously, true based on your experience and the mapping from the pond here. However, I'm not sure that this neighborhood is sitting above this area.
Oh, yeah, it is.
And I think looking at the context maps, you know, we're now 1,630 feet away from the closest home. And I know a portion of that is the pond, but there's a vegetated buffer here, 150-foot vegetated buffer here, plus the existing, you know, to the west of Tahanet. So it is a significant setback that's.
Well, I mean, you're definitely, you're definitely trying to work with the town, and I appreciate that. Just, if I still own the home, I would be wildly upset over what would take place there. And those are some fairly expensive homes. I mean, granted, they're not oceanfront, but you're still talking homes in this 600 to $800,000 price range that are now going to have a very nice view of a solar farm from their decks, their waterfront decks.
Michael, that seems a little strong to me.
Well, you know, I'm just, if I hadn't lived there and sat on the patio and watched those trucks rumble back and forth all summer long, I probably wouldn't have such a strong comment, but it is what it is. I probably wouldn't have such a strong comment, but it is what it is.
But you're, there's gonna be a hundred and fifty feet of thick dense forest between those trucks and the solar farm.
A hundred and fifty feet of thick dense forest is fabulous when you're on a level playing field. But when you have a solar array that's on an upward slope away from the pond, and you have a residence, a residential neighborhood that's on an upward slope away from the pond, that hundred and fifty feet of trees doesn't mean anything.
Really?
Mr. King, Zach Parkus here from Borrego. I don't, I don't have the computer screen in front of me, so I'm just maybe not following perfectly. But it sounds like you're saying, sitting on a deck at Red Pine Lane, a resident would be able to look over approximately fifteen hundred feet of trees and pond to Tohona Road, and then over another hundred and fifty feet of sixty to eighty foot pines? I'm just not, I'm not following the logic there. Thank you.
The so-called forestry or whatever, the tree stand between the backs of those homes and the pond is about a hundred feet. And it's all very tall pine with very little undergrowth. So you have a, you have a perfectly clear shot from the back of the house to the pond. There's nothing to obstruct the view. That's how I know the trucks running back and forth on Tohona Road during all, seven days a week for the longest time. Because I used to sit out there with my coffee in the morning and watch them run. That, that elevation change between Red Pine Lane and the leading edge, you're probably only talking from Red Pine Lane to the leading edge of the solar array behind the trees, you're probably talking a forty foot elevation change. But then the solar field works up the hill to what she's already admitted to be roughly eighty to a hundred feet. So those trees aren't gonna shield anything, because all that solar array is gonna be working its way up the hill.
It's not up another eighty to, it's not up another eighty to a hundred feet though.
I didn't say another, I said two, eighty to a hundred feet.
So let me, let me, can I, can I provide just a little, a little perspective here for a second? I went up there and I took some pictures, I just wanna, I'm not making a case for anything here. I wanna, I just wanna share them with the rest of my board members. Tracy, can I share for a second?
Yes, let me stop.
All right, so this is, can people see the screen? I'm under the power lines. All right, this is on Tohona Road, one fifty, I forget, which is one, one fifty is to the north or south?
One fifty is to the north.
All right, so one fifty is, this is one fifty here, this is one forty over here. This picture is basically looking northeast. This was looking to southeast and red, the neighborhood we're talking about is across the pond, right in this area right here. There's, this is a picture looking northwest, I think.
That makes sense in terms of.
And this is, this picture's looking south, southeast. You could, the pond is to the right here, the power lines go up the, up the hill to the left that way. This is to the southwest, to the pond, and that's to the.
At what point, Richard, could you go back one picture?
Sure.
So that's right at the edge, that's right at the edge of Tohona Road?
I'm standing in Tohona Road, right under the power lines.
Okay. So, so at the edge of Tohona Road, which is, what do we say that is, ten, ten fifteen feet above pond level, so maybe fifty feet?
I'm not sure, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing.
I'm just looking to see.
So, Michael, the point you're making is, is that the view from across the pond there, from those houses is looking across the pond, up the hill, up into the solar farm. And there's no natural berm there, it's just gonna be the hundred and fifty feet of pine trees to shield that neighborhood from the solar farm.
Right.
Okay. I'm gonna take this down, anybody wanna see anything else, or relook at one of those?
Is it your intention to make that site flat, or is it, will it still be an uphill slope when you're done?
It will still be sloped, we need to maintain the existing hydrology patterns.
But it is gonna come down, as in the, the surface area, the, just the level of the grade that the panels are gonna be installed on will drop considerably. So it might be a little bit of hyperbole to say those site, the site will be constructed almost underground from the road, but certainly almost below the road for the, for the western edge of the array. It'll continue to go up, but you're not gonna be able to see the panels, the near panels to you even from the road. That's why I'm just having a really hard time visualizing.
Well, no, from the road, I'm not suggesting that you're gonna see them from Tohona Road. I'm just suggesting that the homes that are up on the hill on the opposite side are gonna have a bird's eye view. You know, if you've got, if you've got a stand of, say, sixty foot pine with homes on a hill across the pond, and then an increasing, increasing slope on the opposite side behind the trees, you're gonna lose thirty, thirty to forty percent of that screening right off of that, just because of the height differential.
Would it be helpful to the board, because Mr. King, I recognize, like Stacy had indicated, obviously you've lived there, we haven't. But would the board be willing to take a field trip out there at some point in the coming weeks just to have everybody stand on Red Pine Lane and take a look? And then perhaps drive over to Tohona Road, walk in a hundred and fifty feet and kind of just get a, get a feel for kind of boots on the ground there? I just, I feel like we've done a really good job screening, and obviously, Mr. King, I want you, I want you on board with, with respect to the improvements we've made, and right now it feels like we're not going far enough.
Well, I just, you know, in addition to doing what's right for the town as a whole, we have to do what's right for the neighbors that already exist there. And it just seems to me like this is being grossly unfair to these people that have purchased these very expensive homes for the sole purpose of living on a nice lake and not living on the edge of a solar field.
Yeah, that's why I just think it might be helpful to get everyone out there. It just feels like sixteen hundred feet away, literally over the, over the hill, over the pond, over the road, through the hundred and fifty feet of trees. I just, it's hard for me to say that we're grossly unfair to these people. But I, again, I haven't stood on that road next to you, and I think that might be helpful from my perspective.
Yeah, and you don't own the home.
Can, can I ask a question? Is it, I think the part that's most confusing to me is understanding, I, I wanna ask for an elevation drawing. I want a side view of, of specifically one fifty in terms of before and after with the, with the fill taken out and the, and the solar farm, and the solar panels in place, to understand exactly what those sightlines are. That would be really helpful. And to answer your first question, I'd be happy to walk out there with you. I was, actually drove over, it's, it's Red Pine, right, Mike? I drove over there and, and I didn't step on anybody's property, but I, I didn't get a good. Yeah, I was, I was very careful. So I, we'd need to get, we'd need to be able to get someone to let us go around the back of their house to get that look, because I didn't get, I wasn't able to do that.
No, well.
A profile drawing sounds like a great idea. Stacy, do you, do you feel like you see anything that would prevent that?
No, I think we should be able, I obviously need to coordinate about what data's available, but with LiDAR and things like that, I wouldn't see an issue with doing, certainly for our site proper, no issue doing a profile. And then if we wanted to extrapolate it, I think we could pull something together that would be helpful.
All right, so let's do that, and can I change the subject for a minute, though?
And just one quick question on that, if you don't mind. You mentioned a profile for one fifty, which is the northerly one, but is it both sites or the southerly one that is of concern?
I think they, I think they both are.
I have no problem with a site visit also, if you, if you arrange it.
I'd have to. The, the, the property, my old property at twenty-two would not be available for a site plan. The woman that bought it, I know for a fact would not welcome us. The people next door are still friends of ours. I could approach Jim and Karen and ask them if they'd be agreeable to letting us take the field trip to their backyard. And theirs is probably the best representation of the affected property anyway as far as line of sight to the proposed solar field. I mean, there's, there's other homes to the right of them that would also be impacted, but I don't know those people, so I wouldn't be in a position to ask them to, to go for a visit.
I could suggest too, I know a bunch of the folks on Winterberry Lane as well, which is the adjacent road there. We work pretty closely with them on the Farm to Market Road solar project. And that project is only a few hundred feet away.
Yeah, but Winterberry, Winterberry comes in at a ninety degree from Red Pine. That's not gonna give you anywhere near an accurate representation of the concern.
No, my, sorry, the point was that I've worked with that homeowners association quite closely to make sure we were, the, the close solar project we built next to their project was properly screened and the sound attenuated properly. So, and that was a few hundred feet away. So the point being, I believe the shoreline is still common owner property, and so we could potentially get down to the shoreline, perhaps not on someone's lot line, but there is a common, common ownership to that whole shoreline, so that could be a potential as well.
Yeah, there is, but I'm telling you as a former resident, just be careful about how you trespass in that area, whether it's considered common ownership or not. That, that neighborhood has a lot of contention.
Sorry, I wasn't implying trespassing, I was simply saying I could reach out to the homeowners association chair, which I, who I'd worked with recently, but.
I, I know, I know him very well.
Let's do all three of those things. Let's get some profile data so we can get a good paper visual. Let's, Michael, you talk to your old neighbors and, and see if you, if they'll let us in the backyard. And I'm sorry, I don't know who was speaking for Borrego.
Sorry, this is Zach, Zach Parkus from Borrego.
Zach, if you would reach out to the homeowners association, to the contacts that you've made there, and let them know what we wanna do and see what options they can provide us. Where I'm going is a site visit is totally, totally appropriate.
Is your, is your choice a location because of the proximity to the power lines?
Are you talking to me?
Is that why these sites were chosen? Traveling with the power line running through, or?
Is that to Borrego?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, yeah, the existing ever-source distribution and transmission infrastructure is one of the main drivers for us, as well as what I expected to be the lack of proximity to any residents. But obviously, that's the bone of contention.
Charlie's trying to get a question in. So Charlie?
I think his idea of getting a cross-section profile is a good one. There's an additional aspect of it that hasn't been discussed. And it was mentioned in the narrative that I did see for twenty-seven Charge Pond Road, and I'm sure it's the same for one forty and one fifty TiHone. And that is that there will be additional clearing beyond the limits of clearing for the panels that will be required in order to allow sunlight to reach all of the panels on the southerly side and probably the southwest and the southeast side. The ZBA was responsible for the approval of the plan that is off of the north of Route twenty-five. And I sat in on that one. The applicant made a determination as what the maximum height of the trees in the buffer zone should be in order to provide the maximum amount of sunlight to those panels. So then, in my view, there should be a discussion as to what that maximum height will be and how much more of the buffer that they're proposing would have to be cleaned out in order to maximize the sunlight due. So in addition to the hundred and fifty foot setback, there may be additional trees that would have to come out. They say they'll leave the vegetation, the, the low vegetation, that's fine. And they would leave the stumps there. But if you know anything about the white pines, they don't regenerate. They might develop new little seedlings as the cones drop, but those don't regenerate. So I think it would be good to know how much additional clearing would be necessary in order to provide that sunlight that I'm sure they'll want for the panel.
So just to clarify, there's no additional clearing beyond the limit of clearing that's depicted on the plan? So that one hundred and fifty foot offset from Tohona Road is the limit of clearing. The narrative discussion was intended to address the bylaw requirements about minimizing clearing to the, what's necessary for the solar array. And so we were acknowledging that if you look at the footprint of the solar panels themselves, that's a certain acreage, and then we are clearing beyond that solar panel footprint because of a few things. We need to incorporate stormwater, and we need to have appropriate sunlight able to reach the arrays. That combined clearing for the panels and the sunlight access and any stormwater or grading is what's depicted on the plans as the limit of clearing. So we're not going to be going beyond what's shown on the plans.
I clarifies it, and if there is no additional clearing above, beyond what's shown on the plan, then you can go with what's shown.
Good, thanks Stacy.
So, you said you haven't addressed the most recent review letter?
No, we just received that actually a couple days before we issued this supplemental package. So we had already kind of been in process of pulling all of this information together, and we knew we wouldn't be able to address full revised plans. We're also awaiting the conservation agent's review of the wetlands at this particular site. So in the interim, we wanted to get this information to the board so they could see, you know, we could continue the discussion from the last year in terms of what we had done. We certainly will respond to Mr. Rowley's comments as we revise the plans and talk through what he had in his letter. So we have the letter for twenty-seven Charge, and we do not have letters yet for the two Tohona sites.
The conservation's not completed the determination?
They've finished review of Charge Pond, but have not started Toh- they've been reviewing it. The agent in terms of reviewing the delineation hasn't started reviewing the field delineation at Tohona.
So you know, I have not reviewed one forty TiHone or one fifty TiHone. I was about to, and then I got word from Ken's office that there were revisions. But the only revisions that I've seen are what you've seen, and it doesn't include any details of the revision with respect to the stormwater or anything. So I would have to see that complete package to begin a review of those plans.
So Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know in coordinating with Ken, we had thought that your review on these sites was continuing, and our hope was that we would address everything at once, you know, the outcome of this site visit and the profile review, any comments that you may have, and then issue a final package to the planning board. So I think, and Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, our preference, if the board would consider it, would be for Mr. Rowley to continue his review based on the materials that have been submitted, acknowledging the fact that obviously, once we submit revised materials, they will require a supplemental review.
Yeah, that's correct, Chairman Barrett.
Charlie, isn't that pretty normal? We're, we just, we just went through that on the Antonelli property. We've looked at plans and revised them, got comments from people and yourself, and revised them, and then approved it, waiting for a third revision.
No, because I'm not sure that all the stormwater is in the same place. I'm sure it isn't, if they went from a fifty to a hundred and fifty foot setback, that's been modified.
It has.
I don't know what it is yet.
And, and we do understand that it results in a, in a second review of the materials. I think our hope was, if. And and we do understand that it results in a in a second review of the materials. I think our hope was if there was some basic disagreement or comment on something we had missed or something in our assumptions, you know, we would have that now so that we could make sure to incorporate it into the revised materials. So we weren't aware that the review for the Tahanet sites was on hold.
Certainly, our strong preference to receive comments from peer review on the two Tahanet projects so that we can incorporate such comments or responses as necessary. I think Charge Pond gives us a great basis for modifying those plans so that we can get closer, if not to, a final version. But it's really hard to do that without feedback.
It's hard for me to do it when I don't have a final plan to look at.
Well, I think what we're asking is that you look at the plans that have been formally submitted and the stormwater that's been submitted and and review. So we understand that that doesn't depict the 150 that I've shown on these conceptual exhibits. But that's why we updated it as conceptual, so that we wouldn't go through the full redesign process in case you had other comments that we needed to accommodate.
I will go in the direction of the planning board. I don't feel it's appropriate to do it that way. But if they do, that's what I'll do.
So you're what you're suggesting is he review the existing plan except for the drainage and wait till the final plan is created? Is that?
I would say review all of it, as he did for Charge Pond would be our preference, understanding that it it will be duplicative. There will be a second review needed of the materials, but that way, if there are some, you know, there were some general comments on Charge Pond, for example, that weren't necessarily specifically design-related. So it would be nice to be able to consider those as we revise the package for the Tahanet sites as well.
Stacy, how much effort would it take to update 140 and 150 to on on your end to give Charlie something that's closer to final than what he has now?
It's a significant effort. So we would certainly prefer, I would say at a minimum, to wait until we have the board's final direction in terms of visual concerns and the setback that we're talking about. It it would be a significant effort to revise it and do like an interim stutter step.
So would it be?
The significant effort to revise it, it almost seems to me that it it just makes more sense to wait. Because if there's that much change that's going to take place in those plans, I'm wasting my time to review a plan that's not even going to be used.
Well, and and to be clear, the significant effort isn't necessarily all technical. Certainly, it's yes, we have to rerun the hydro pad once we have a new limit of clearing and, you know, shift the solar array panels. But some portion of it is also just administrative in terms of reissuing the 13-sheet plan set and having it stamped and all of that sort of management that goes into actually issuing a plan set.
That's part of the process of that. I mean, you're not making great pay to the planning board to ask me to redo a plan that isn't even going to be used, waste the money on that, and then have to go through the same process again. That doesn't seem fair to me.
Stacy, this is this is Richard. I'm I'm lining up with Charlie on this one.
Might I suggest that we complete a site visit and and see if we can come up with some direction from that point, and then may have a an end plan that Charlie could review once and be done?
You will certainly defer to the board's direction, but it would be appreciated to, at a minimum, have the site visit and kind of the final guidance on limit of clearing.
I I think we could make a better educated stand on that at once we do the site visit and get a feel for what's out there.
Okay.
Can we schedule a site visit now?
What's that?
Can we schedule a site visit for next week, then?
My only question would be, can we pull everybody together at that point?
I understand. I'm not available next Saturday.
Meeting meeting the 15th?
Michael's not around the 15th. Is that right, Mike?
Correct. I'm out of town Saturday. I mean, to be honest, if you want to do a site visit without me, I lived there for three years. I really don't need to go back to to know what I've seen.
Oh, I I I think you're the most critical guy that has to go.
Well, I'd have to. I also have to try to coordinate it with Jim and Karen to access their property. The gentleman from Borrego, I forget your name, I apologize. He had talked about reaching out to the homeowners association president whose home is also on Tahanet Pond. He's on the pond side of Red Pine as well. So you might be able to arrange to to do the site visit from his home.
Alternatively, we could just walk to the make-piece site and look from the proposed array west toward the pond, toward the homes, and get a pretty good feel there.
You could, but I think if you're going to do that, you'd have to walk up to the to the high elevation, to the 80 or 85-foot elevation point to look across. And at that point, you're you're in the forest, because that hasn't been cleared yet.
Can we do this? Could we do this 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 week at 6 o'clock at night, Mike?
I I'm available. I can leave. I can leave town Cranston, you know, at 3:30, 4 o'clock on any given day without any impact on my on my day.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, because it's staying light plenty. We got we got plenty of time. 5 5 o'clock on.
Yeah, the light the light is definitely with us at that time of day.
Can we? Today's at 10. Zach, you're going to reach out to the homeowners. Who's going to? Ken, you want to you want to work with Stacy and coordinate this thing and and tread with let's set a target? How about we set a target for 5:30 on Thursday, the 13th?
And Ken, if you don't mind actually coordinating with Zach, I apologize, but I am away for the remainder of the week, so I won't be able to join you.
All right, Zach, can I have a quick close-up?
Yep, Thursday afternoon works fine for for Michael.
And I'll I'll reach out to Jim and see if he's going to be available for or if I can at least have his permission if he's not at home to to walk his property.
So if we work this out, come up with a meeting place and broadcast it out there to us, so.
I I have a a question. I'm not quite sure who is in the position to answer it. What's the you had mentioned about $14 million in tax revenue from the property once it's developed?
Sure. Zach Parkus here. So I've been in contact with the assessor and the town administrator and extrapolating from the payment in lieu of taxes or the pilot agreements, that is basically ubiquitous with solar projects, from the most recent that I've done with the town of Wareham. When you add that up, it's a per-megawatt fee. So the rates that I proposed and that I'm waiting for the town to come back on are approximately $588,000 a year, and they'll increase at a rate of 2.5% per year. And so that 14 and a little bit more million was the cumulative value over the term that these projects would would pay toward the town's general fund.
Which is approximately 25 years?
20.
20. Okay. And how is how is that different from what the tax rate of the undeveloped property is in its present state?
The present state would round pretty close to zero. It's in chapter land, barely paying any taxes right now.
Thank you.
Did we agree to target 5:30 on Thursday?
Yep.
Okay. Zach, you're on board. Ken, you're on board. Mike, you're on board to reach out to your neighbors?
Yep.
Good. Good. This is a good plan.
And I will reach out now. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make public comment?
Jim Manese here on Cranberry Highway. Is this is this hearing just 140 and 150 Tyhonet right now?
No, it's all three projects.
Okay. So have we got a calculation on how much gravel will be removed for the solar project related to the solar project for 140 and 150 and also for 27? And did the that's question one. Question two would be the timber calculations. Did we do it for 27 Charge Pond Road also? And
Can we answer the questions one at a time?
No, just hold on there. Go ahead. Yeah, you do that. Do number one. We'll let Chairman Barrett, you know, control this. Thank you.
Sure. So for the first question regarding gravel removal, we do understand it's a separate gravel removal process in Wareham, particularly for, I believe it's the 140 site where there is some removal proposed. The other sites are just grading to accommodate the array and don't have the associated removal that we spoke about at the last meeting. And then for the timber calculations, they did also include 27 Charge Pond. So the number that I noted, that just over $80,000 is all three projects together. And then within the supplemental information that we sent to the planning board, there is the individual information by project broken down as well.
Well, thank you. And so if I understand correctly, you're doing the calculations for 140 and 150 on the gravel of the earth removal calculations, and you'll be processing a permit for that?
I can't speak to that as I am not engaged for that right now, but we do recognize that it's a separate process in Wareham.
But are you doing it? Is there a calculation for how much earth will be removed for the project?
We have not calculated it.
But you will be correctly correct on that?
I imagine that someone will be. I have not been engaged for that process by the owner.
So we don't know what the final elevation will be of the project?
We do know the final elevations there depicted on the plans that will be, you know, updated. So it's essentially at one the southerly 140 site. It's about a 30-foot change in elevation, generally speaking, that we're talking about from existing to proposed.
Right. So you know how you you'd be able to calculate how much material will be removed?
It is fully calculated, yes.
Okay, does that that's very important to us.
Stacy, Jimmy, I got let me get a clarification. Stacy, the only the only one of the properties that you're doing any removal is 140. Did I hear that right?
So yes, 140 is the only one that has removal in association with the landowner's operations, I'll call it. The other two have grading proposed, but in association with accommodating the solar panels and largely accommodating the stormwater.
Okay.
And and the ring access roads for Wareham.
But in are those is 140 and 150 chapter lands? I don't believe they are. I believe they're taxed as nonchapter lands.
They are chapter lands.
No, 27 is in 140, 150. I thought looking it up, it was not under chapter protection. It wasn't 61A or 60.
Depending on how you're looking it up, if you're looking it up on the assessor's database, I am aware that there is a different property that is called 140 Tahanet Road and a different property that is referred to as 150 Tahanet Road. I'm not sure if that's part of the discrepancy.
I'm not sure. I just know what I what I'm able to glean from the information that's available through the assessors, immunity mapper, the other mapper. And those two parcels were not chapter land, but 27 Charge Pond Road is chapter land. And a previous one you did, which really doesn't bear on it, was an undevelopable parcel by the assessors. And that's what you're taxed on is what what they, not you personally, what what they determine. And through in with the application of the landowner, what the land should be appropriately taxed as. So I guess these are things we need to work through.
That's correct. If they haven't been taken out, I guess that process would have to be exercised.
And 27 would need to be applied to be removed from 61A protection. Correct. And the others, I'm not sure. I'll look it up again, but maybe maybe Director Buckland can can help us out on that as we move forward. Thank you.
Jim, Zach Parkus here. If you'd like to email me directly or through Ken, I'd be happy to provide you with the information. As Stacy said, the the addresses that we're using to identify these properties perhaps don't line up to the 911 addresses that the assessors use.
Well, I use I use the map and just do the info. Click the info on the parcel, and that brings it up. But I'll I'll talk with Ken and we'll he'll be able to hopefully, we'll be able to come up with what it actually is at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Buckland.
Anything further for a more public comment?
Motion to close the public hearing?
No, we're not closing at this point.
I'm sorry, to continue to continue the public hearing?
You did make Stacy smile, though. She thought she was all sick.
I, no, no.
A motion to continue to the, what we say it was, the 24th?
24th, that's right.
At 6 o'clock. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Right.
Bye.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Site visit's going to be Thursday at 5:30?
That's tentative, Mike.
Yeah, if we pull that together, just send us an email where the meeting place will be and.
Why don't we why don't we try why don't we try to start at Red Pine?
Yeah, I just don't know where on Red Pine we will.
Yeah, there's nowhere to park. We're going to have to have a destination. So I'll I'll reach out to Jim tonight after we're done, check his schedule, make sure that he's he's on board with letting us come onto his property. And then I'll I'll reach back out to George. I have your cell phone, George, so I'll I'll reach out to you.
Very good. I don't have an agenda in front of me, Ken. Do we have anything else there?
There's one other item. It's enforcement of the special permit for clearing at Winship Avenue under Mr. Clemming.
Yes.
The property doesn't look that as you as you may remember, this was a special permit for clearing that the planning board did a special permit for. And it included restoration of the of the land to a ground, appropriate ground cover. And that has not had that has not occurred as yet. And I wanted to know the board's intent, if you wanted to take enforcement action to to ensure the completion of the of the of the cover to restore or not necessarily restore, because it was all tree, but to maintain the land so that it's in better condition than it is now.
I will just say, I was by there the other day, and it looks awful. It hasn't nothing done.
Yeah, the last. Yeah, the last time I was there, all the stumps and whatnot were still in place.
Only thing's new is the Foss Hill sign, that's all. Yeah, I guess since our, uh, since we came to a special permit agreement on this, uh, I guess nothing, there's been no stump clearing or minimal, there's been damage to the roadway, and there's been no seeding taking place. I think a representative said they would try seeding it again, but this is not the right time, time of year for that, especially in drought conditions.
It's close, another month.
But, uh, yeah, I was under the impression that an enforcement action had already started taking place, Ken, is that accurate?
It is, there, there was initial indication, initial note to the, uh, property owner that there was a problem. And I wanted the board's confirmation that, uh, you wanted to take, uh, all appropriate actions against the, uh, property owner to ensure restoration of the land.
That would be my, uh, that would be my wish.
Yep, I would have to agree.
Do you like a motion of that effect?
Please.
So make a motion to enforce the restoration or cleanup of the Clemmie property, as previously agreed?
I'll second that.
Basically execute the conditions of the special permit.
Time has to run before that special permit expires, Ken.
Uh, it's got about another, uh, four to six months.
Did you get the right motion and did you get the right second, George?
Uh, was there a second?
I did.
Thank you. So do we need to direct the building commissioner to enforce that, or is that a good enough motion?
That's a good enough motion, I'll check in with the building commissioner and town council about enforcement and how we actually go about doing it.
Because he had two years, didn't he, Ken, on that?
That's right, yes, two years on that special permit.
So, so I think we should tread lightly on that, uh, maybe notify him that his time is almost up to start doing something, Druss is starting action, because, uh, Mr. Clemmie likes confrontation, so.
Yeah, and technically, two years aren't up, so he's not late right now.
Right, right. Who wish to adjust your motion, or?
Well, uh, adjust the motion to notify the property owner that the timeframe for the, um, cleanup and restoration of the property is growing near, and maybe the board would appreciate, uh, some enlightenment as to his plans to complete the, uh, work prior to the deadline.
Does that work, Ken?
Yes, it does.
And then I'll second that.
So motions made and seconded to advise the property owner of, of his, uh, standing, sounds like there's spraying for mosquitoes out there tonight, I hear low-flying aircraft.
That's good.
So motion was made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous? Are there remedies, should this not get executed, Ken?
Uh, that's what I was gonna check with town council, uh, we can have, uh, building commissioner enforce the, uh, the permit and have a, uh, three hundred dollar a day fine issued.
Very good, anything, uh, anything else on that, Ken?
Uh, just one other thing, that they, a letter came from Francis and Kimberly Burnett of Station Street. Uh, they'd like to get confirmation on the, uh, status of the easement and access to their property. Uh, a little unusual, not something that's, that's done, but, uh, commonly for, uh, the research that has to be done to, uh, determine, uh, ownership and and rights of, of access. But, uh, they seem to be under some duress, so, uh, we were going to follow through and and provide some information on the, on the, uh, the rights of access from Station Street and, uh.
Damn, that damn duck's here again. Now, what, what is that about, uh, Ken, their access been cut off, or?
What the hell is that?
Somebody stepped on a duck. Ringtone.
Uh, yeah, there, there's an issue between two, two of the property owners on the easement that, uh, I issue on rights of access.
Is that that, uh, roadway that goes off of Station Street? Kind of spurs off it?
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, let's take a look at that and see what you've see where we're at with that. Anything further?
George, can we discuss about going back to your forum back in the meeting hall? Uh, I'm too old to adapt to this new technology, and, uh, I, I find it very confusing. Uh, you can't really see too much on the prints, because, you know, what we're dealing with. I think the corona's under a safe level now, so I think we're safe. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Well, I'm of the same mind, Mike, but I, I know last time we broached the subject, there was still some concern, so I will, uh, yield to the board's wishes.
I will, I will yield as well, I, I am on the opposite side, I, I don't see the need for taking a risk, but then again, I, I like the remote and the, and the the Zoom functions a lot, Michael Baptiste, I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, don't get in George U as well. But I will, um, if, I want it to be as effective as possible, and if, and if, and if people want to go back together, um, in twen, in the room, I'll do that, I prefer this way. But I, I'm not gonna be a stickler about it.
I, I would have to agree with Mike Baptiste in that I, I, I like the face-to-face uh, interaction with the applicants better. But I will say that these Zoom meetings have been far more productive. If, if we can find a way to run these meetings in the meeting room in a more expeditious fashion than we used to, so that we're not sitting around for, for three and four hours to do two hours worth of work, then I'm on board with going back to the meeting room. But if, if it's gonna go back to being, um, four hours of time for two hours worth of work, I, I would vote to stay with the remote meeting.
I think one of the things we need to think about is using the, um, the overhead projector to share, to get, get the maps up on the screen so people can see them, um, so that, in a, in a big, in a big manner, not, not the little, the little ones that everyone, that we're all individually staring at, where, where a presenter can point out the, the, the details on these drawings that he, that he wants to bring to our attention, and we can ask questions and all be on exactly the same page, I think that's been a big part of the productivity gains, we're all on the same page, looking at the same stuff at the same time.
The difficulty with that is, you know, for us to see it and for the public to see it, it's, we're, we're a hundred and eighty degrees off from each other.
Yeah, but they could see it better than they do now, I mean, I mean.
I'll, I'll grant you that, we could, uh, we can see about, maybe since things are giving, given us in electronic fashion now, we could, we'd be better able to do that.
Well, Ken, isn't it true that anything that, uh, an engineering firm would bring to a meeting to put on a, on a easel, uh, we're gonna have in PDF form?
That's correct.
And, I mean, I'll, I'll take it upon myself to, to throw it up on the screen, I'll be happy to do that. They're gonna be in the projects folder, right?
That's right, all the application materials go in the projects folder.
So, I, I mean, I can do it right there from the table, and, and I'll, I'll just take on the ownership of, uh, hooking up and, and uh, bringing that stuff up, that stuff, that stuff up as we need to, let's give it a try.
Yeah, I just, I just think there's an opportunity to here to be more productive.
I, I agree, Michael.
And if we can figure out a way to be more productive, then I don't mind being there for three or four hours, if it'll allow us to maybe fit one more project in on the schedule and help speed things along.
And, uh, I will do better not to, to let discussions linger so long.
I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get you a big ham with you.
Well, I try to give everybody the chance to, uh, voice their opinion, and sometimes it gets uh, carried away, but, uh.
So you wanna start on the, the seventeenth, and this, or, maybe that'd be a bad one to do on a public hearing? Yeah, might as well.
Seventeenth is the foreign articles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we do a combination of the two, if somebody wanted to watch them from home, they could, uh, they could do that, or?
That's what, that's what WCTV is for.
Yeah, okay.
And they've got a camera pointed at the screen, right, Ken?
That's right.
All right. So what's, what's the verdict on the seventeenth, live or memorex?
Live. I make a motion, we go back to normal, starting on the seventeenth.
I, I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. So that's.
Got a question for you?
Who was that?
Do I have the board's permission to, uh, talk directly with JAF on Charlie Turner's road?
Uh, I think that would be, uh, pro, uh, productive. Anybody have a problem, Charlie, dealing with JAF? To work out the engineering?
Discussion on that second, uh, access road due, or the site distance that, uh, one of your brothers noted?
Yeah. And I think, uh, Say again, Charlie?
Were there any concerns over the construction of that second road into Millworth?
Uh, the distance between them, I guess, would be an issue, and I think that that line coming down the power lines could use some more screening in my mind.
Uh, I did, if you had a chance to read my comments, I did make some point about that road. So if, if somebody hasn't had a chance to read the comments yet, I would appreciate if you could, and I'll see what, uh, JAF has to say about it when I meet with them between now and the seventeenth.
Um, they will be, uh, they won't be back on the seventeenth. They won't be back till the following week. Twenty-fourth?
You got two weeks, Charlie.
Seventeenth is meant to be a workshop?
I'm, I'm sorry, okay. All right, all right, so it's two weeks, the twenty-fourth, sorry.
Okay. Anything further? One thing about meeting live, I won't be sitting five feet away from my dinner.
Or the bar, anyway, uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, meeting adjourned at eight forty-six. Thank you, John.
Thanks, everybody, thank you.
Michael, it was nice to see you again, Paul.